Mayor Rowland Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Crockett.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Orderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fish.
Here. Mayor, if I could just for a moment, please. As you note, City Recorder Tina Matthews is not here tonight. And I think this is actually the first meeting she has missed since her appointment. For those that don't know, she was in a pretty bad automobile accident a week ago yesterday. Broke her right arm and bruised her up pretty bad. And she missed a few days of work. She started coming back slowly, doing a lot of work from home and trying to work with, you can imagine, trying to work with your one hand, being your weak hand. So she asked to be excused for tonight. And I let her go on home. She worked all day today until 5:00 o'clock, and I let her go home. And of course Regina will do a fine job sitting in for her, but just for the record on why she is not here.
Thank you.
Was Coach her driver's ed teacher?
No. No, but he may have been the one that hit her.
Remember using that device, Dave.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. It has been inserted into your package for regular session March 9th, 2021. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'm making motions to approve them.
You have a motion on the board to approve the minutes as presented. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And any nay, like sign. Here and none, motion carries. Proclaimations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor. Tonight, we do have a recognition of a citizen. Most of you know the gentleman that just presented his tape recorder to my desk, Mr. Ray Snyder. I've been told that he has been around here longer than most others. Something forty-two years. Is that right, Ray?
A little over forty-two years. Temporarily, he's forty-three.
But who's counting, right? Okay. But we do have a certificate of recognition for your service to the city of Newport and to this council. Where I think your boss would like to say a few words also. So if he would come up.
Where do you want that one?
Your own boss, but we're not.
Ray, since 1978, you have covered approximately 510 city council meetings. And in addition to that, committee meetings, budget meetings, and a whole slew of other things. And that's just for the city. Not even talking about county business that you've covered. You are an icon in this county. You're like a fixture here. And this being your very last city council meeting, we just wanted to recognize you for your commitment and your dedication to our community and to the city of Newport. And thank you, and we wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
On behalf of the city of Newport, and the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and all our staff, we'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition, Ray.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and we wish you the best in all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mayor, very much.
Hey, I would, I would, Boardman, how much does it appreciate you, what you've done. You have a saddle lot.
Thank you very much. Let me say that I appreciate this, first off. Secondly, I appreciate everybody that's in this room. The community has been very, very helpful to me in doing the things that I have done, covering the many, many meetings, and wrecks, and murders, and trials, et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate everybody's support and help. I don't, the chief isn't here, is he?
No, he's on vacation.
Oh, okay, okay. I was gonna apologize to the chief for the many times I've called and text him at 5:00 in the morning to find out information for my news at 6:00. So I did wanna say that. Going back to the first weekend that I was in Newport, after I graduated from school at UAB, I came up here, got here on a Saturday. And Sunday, the radio station signed on here, it's a brand-new radio station in September of 1978. I was thinking back to that first day that I covered news in Newport. I had never, ever heard of moonshine before in my life. But that day, one of my stories was the arrest of a fellow for making moonshine. And I remember distinctly, one of the police officers showed me moonshine. It looked like water to me. But he said, this is how it works. He poured it on the sidewalk and lit a match to it to show me the difference between water and moonshine. At any rate, that police officer was a patrolman at the time, and his name was Clay Webb, who many of you remember went on to be chief of the police department. But the bottom line is, I appreciate everybody's help discovering news. Sylvie and I have bought a home on a mountain top. It's a cabin with a guest house in Wray, Virginia, very close to our daughter's home. She's been pushing, and pushing, and pushing for us to move. I just closed on the farm in Bybee, and so next Friday will be my last day covering the news here. But thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ray. Next item on the agenda is communications from the city administrator.
I'd like to also remind everybody this week, it's National Telecommunicators Week. That's a week set aside for the public safety dispatchers, and the state preferred to call telecommunicators now, so this is a week to remember them and keep them in your thoughts.
Speaking of dispatchers, I was dispatching at the sheriff's department in seventy-eight when Ray came here. And I remember quite clearly him coming, and he was a different kind of a fellow that nobody had ever dealt with before, or somebody that was an actual aggressive reporter. And so they liked to pull jokes on him. And they were bad to go, if they saw him coming up the sidewalk, they'd run out the door, and run and jump in a patrol car, and turn the blue lights on, and shoot out of town. And he'd come in, what's happening, what's happening, what's happening? And nothing, nothing was happening. They were doing that to mess with him. So he was the brunt of a lot of jokes when he first come, but he was a real good sport. But they liked to make it hard on him.
Thank you for your, thank you for your help through the years.
Well, thank you. You're welcome. And, you know, I tried to tell those guys back at the time, especially some of the older guys, at that time, I don't wanna get into a big old war story, but at that time, we had just, four years earlier, come out of the fee-grabbing system, for those older folks that remember what that is. And what that was is that there weren't salary deputies until 1974. Prior to that, they were, they got paid fees that were paid off of the arrests they made. The fines and court costs paid their salaries. And so the state did away with that and changed that in seventy-four. And so those older guys, there were still guys there that had worked under that system, and they had a different kind of mindset. And they didn't always appreciate Ray's aggressiveness, and didn't really understand him. And so, you know, I tried to get across to them that, look, you know, he's just doing a job. You know, he's doing what he's paid to do, he's just trying to do his job. And I think over time, that pretty much everybody come to accept him and the role that he was trying to play. I don't know that Sheriff Stinson did. They stated odds a little bit, and I don't know that he ever really accepted him all that great. But for the most part, I think about everybody did. And so, thank you. You're welcome, Ray. I did what I could do for you, brother.
Thank you very much.
Okay. COVID update. Since last meeting, we've had a few employees being quarantined. We've had one positive case, one employee that was pretty sick. We were worried about them, thought they were going to end up on a ventilator. They were hospitalized for a week or two, and they didn't make it onto the ventilator, and we were really glad of that. They are now back home, and hopefully will be back to work by May 12th. That's the target date right now. But we did have one employee that got pretty sick. And we're thankful that they're back home and on the mend now, because we were really worried about them for a few days. As far as the vaccine, the vaccinations go, thirty-five percent of our employees have had at least one dose or more. We are trying to encourage our people to get vaccinated. I spoke to the police department last Wednesday about trying to up the rate within that department. And, you know, it's a hard sell. And I think that the department that had the person to get really sick, that motivated a few of them to go, and a few more of them to go get vaccinated. And so I'm hoping over time that more of them will. You know, some places are mandating that. I don't recommend that. I won't do that unless you all instruct me that that's the way that you wanna go. But I'm not gonna make people get it, that's a personal choice. And I've had my first shot, and hopefully we'll get my other one in about a week and a half, and we'll go from there. But I know the second shot is the one everybody dreads. You know, we talk about it every Monday morning at our department head meeting. And the mayor has reported, he's very good with bringing us statistics, and he has reported that one of the big problems that they have had with the rollout, especially with the two-dose versions, is that folks not coming back for their second shot. They get the first shot and don't come back for the second. And I personally think that a lot of that is brought on because of the reported side effects that folks are having with the second dose. And they make it through that first dose, and maybe their arm gets a little sore, but they don't get sick. And then they kinda, they listen to everybody tell these horror stories about how sick they got with the second dose, and then they think, well, I'll just skip that second dose and not go back. But we are encouraging our people to do that. If they don't, then, you know, that's their choice. But right now, it's at thirty-five percent that we've had. We have placed on the table in front of each of you a manila folder or envelope. Inside that is our proposed budget for the 21-22 fiscal year. It's that time of year again. We put a lot of time into it, nobody near as much as Tina. She worked very closely with each department head to go through with their requests, trim those down, and then after she gets through with them, she brings them to me. And then I say if I need, if I wanna trim them any farther. Some we did, some we didn't. And I feel there's something in the budget for everybody. Each department got something, but no department got everything they asked for. And that's true every year. And of course, you know, I've been on that side of the coin. It's their job to get all they can get for their department. And I don't grudge that. I don't grudge anybody asking for stuff for their department. If they're not doing that, then they're not looking out for their department, you know, the department heads, if they're not asking for stuff. We just have to determine, can we afford it, and do we need it? And do we need it right now? Because a lot of times, we'll push something down another year or two. We'll say, well, we'll come back to that next year, or the next year, or whatever, and try to get by one more year or whatever. So this is our proposed budget. We've got a lot of things spelled out in there that are in the budget. You know, it'll be up to you guys if you want to have a workshop in May. Traditionally, if we have a workshop, we have it the first Tuesday in May, and I believe that's May 4th. Now, last year, you all opted not to have a workshop. You were satisfied with what you had seen in the budget, and we moved forward with the first reading at the regular meeting in May. And that's what we will do this year, if you all decide that you don't need a workshop. You can either let me know, let the mayor know, only the mayor can call a workshop, but if you tell me, I'll pass it on to him, or you can tell him directly if you want a workshop, and he'll move accordingly to that. But between now and then, at any time, when you're looking at this, if you have any questions, call me, call Tina, call, if it's about a specific department, call the department head. You know, let them defend their budget. I've had, over the years, I've had to defend plenty of them. So they should be fully prepared to defend their budgets. And so, but we want you to have a clear understanding of everything that's in there. So if you have any questions at all, you can call us, and we'll help you with it. Now, one thing that I have put down there is this sheet. And this is from Keep Cock County Beautiful. Currently, we appropriate $3,750 for Keep Cock County Beautiful, an appropriation for them each year that they use as they see fit. They have requested that we double that appropriation in the coming budget. We don't do that without you all telling us to do that. We put in whatever we gave them last year on any of these outside agencies that we donate to. Excuse me. So if you all decide you want that in there, let us know, and we will get that in before the reading of the budget in May. And so, you know, I will leave that to you all to consider, and let us know if you wanna leave it at its current funding level, or if you want to increase it by double, or do you wanna increase it less. I mean, just because they asked for it to be doubled, I'm sure they would be happy with anything. But again, that's in y'all's court on what you wanna do on that. We, currently, we, this past week, we received notification from Public Entity Partners, which used to be TML, Tennessee Municipal League. That is our insurance provider for workers' comp, liability, and property. And we were notified that we were gonna get a rebate of $56,397 this year. So that's money that we're gonna be getting back from them to go back into the general fund. So we were real tickled with that and wanted to share that information with you. Just another quick thing on a personal note. Today is my eighth anniversary of being in this position. I just so happened to fall that way. And I just wanna say that eight years has went by really fast, and it's amazing how quick time goes by and gets away from you. But, you know, it's been the toughest job I ever had, but it's also been one of the most fulfilling jobs I've ever had. And it's an honor and a privilege to serve for eight years, and I appreciate the opportunity that y'all have given me and the way you guys have worked with me. It wouldn't be the job it is without the support of you all. Because, you know, the city, it don't matter how good an idea I or some of the staff have, it doesn't happen without y'all's support. And secondly, it doesn't happen without the staff either. I'm not a one-man show. The success we've had, I attribute a lot of that to the staff. You know, I'm a firm believer that you're only as good as the people you have around you. And I always encourage the department heads to evaluate and try to get the absolute best person they can when they have these openings to fill, because your people will make you or break you. I firmly believe that. But I just wanted to make a brief note of that and say thank you, and we'll keep chugging at it. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. I think the vice mayor had asked to make a comment.
I just wanted to thank all the department heads. I don't think people realize what they go through with, and what they do. And if you don't go and see what they do, and talk to them, stuff, you don't know. And I just wanted to tell all the department heads, I think all of them here but Maurice, that y'all doing a real good job, very organized, very diligent, and really appreciate the job y'all do, and I come to my limits. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, as far as James goes, I've known him pushing for forty years now, I guess. I think he was probably one of the best decisions that council, that Bobby and Coach and I were on, eventually was one of the best decisions we made, because him and his staff helped draw us out of the quagmire that we were drawn into for a number of years. And you can look in these publications that we get, his type of job gets changed like socks routinely. And for him to be in a position like this for eight years, I think that speaks fairly highly of him and his staff. He makes us look good.
I try. I do my best.
You can't make someone look good in my whole.
I tell. He's the one you got to work with.
Mr. Mayor, I heard everybody quit talking. He used to come to the fire park about 5:00 in the morning, and he'd go with Kipper reports and all the last bit, and he'd sneak in there, get through the porch and go through and make sure if anything he put underneath. And I usually heard him come in, you know, he'd come in back, we had one door we didn't lock. I don't know how he found that back, but he'd come in that door. And I told him one night, I said, you need to probably, put a memo, went to all these other guys, and I said, some of them slipped with a gun. In the pocket, there was another mattress, and they all unloaded on me. We had a big life there. And by then, you might come and sneak into the 5:00 in the morning, you're Ray Snyder.
Any other comments?
I think I first heard Ray's voice when I was a sophomore in high school. So that's been quite a while ago. Back in the day, that's how we found out if there's gonna be a school in Cock County, or the L.A.K., or WNBC, that wasn't even the internet or anything of that nature, so you'd listen very closely.
Anyone else? Well, if not, we have, the next item on the agenda is appointment of boards, commissions, or committees. Item A is consideration of appointment to the Newport Utility Board, Mr. Claude Gatlin's term.
I would like to appoint Dr. Emily Eisenhower to that position.
Second.
All right, we have to put a motion to appoint Dr. Emily Eisenhower to the Newport Utility Board. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Here and none, please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, like sign. Here and none, motion carries. Item B is discussion of appointment to Fire Civil Service Board, Kenneth Calfey's term, appointed by Fire Civil Service.
Mayor, the board met, the Civil Service Board met, and they appointed Mike Overholt to, that's the one that's filled by the board, and they voted to appoint Mike Overholt to fill out that term, and he has actually already attended his first meeting, and they're moving forward with him.
Do we need a vote to approve that?
No, sir. We just, all we need to do is just announce it.
I'd like to comment on Ken's Calfey. Congrat, not congratulate you, but tell him thank you for all the years he served on that board. He did a real good job, and they really liked him. I'd like to say something, Ken's Calfey.
Okay, any other comments? All right, item seven, reports from committees, members of council, and other offices. The only item on there is for Tanner Preservation Alliance.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Louanna, I mentioned her, Dan, are you good now? I can bump there now.
Oh, no.
Are you sure? Okay.
Yeah, the mask, just for the, thank you, though.
I would like to say that as I passed by earlier this afternoon, I noticed the guys were out there striping the lot. And it makes a big difference. You wouldn't think just painting some lines on the parking lot would make that so much of a difference, but it really does. So I think there's some folks that, I've had several complaints over the last few days about it not being done, so I was glad to see it happen today.
The landscaping looks really nice, too.
Yes. We still have a little ways to go with that building, and a few other things that need to be done, but so far, so good. Really looking forward to it opening fully. All right, item eight is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-01, Budget Amendment for the City of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance. It's ordinance 2021-01, An Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital Program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, this good year 2020-2021. Need a motion, Mayor?
Yes, we need a motion.
Make a motion. Second.
We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-01, Budget Amendment for the City of Newport. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call vote.
Alderman Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Orderwoman Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Crockett.
Yes. New business is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2021-02, Amending the Privilege of Occupancy in Hotel Motel Tax.
And by the caption of that ordinance, it's ordinance number 2021-02, An Ordinance to Amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title IX, Business Peddlers, Solicitors, et cetera. Chapter Eight, Hotel or Motels, Section 808, Privileged Tax Levied Use.
Mayor, this is something that we've had on the back burner for some time. Many years ago, when the hotel motel tax was first enacted, we appropriated the ability to impose up to a 5% occupancy tax if we so chose. At the time, the debate went back and forth whether to do 4% or 2%. And ultimately, because the funds have to be used for tourism-related expense, the city was only able at that time to come up with a justification of only 2%. And so the original plan was to do 4%. But because of that, because they couldn't justify 4%, they backed it down to 2%. And what we are recommending and asking is that you all go now, consider returning to that 4% amount, because we can now justify that due to the Tanner Building and the use of the Tanner Building for the Welcome Center and museum that we plan to put in there. And we have crunched the numbers on the proposed amount that it will bring in, and on the expense that we will have, and those numbers come together very nicely. And so we think that the Welcome Center will be an asset to the tourism in the county, and the funds generated will go to fund that. And so we see that as a legitimate expense for use of the hotel motel tax increase. That is the whole purpose of it. That's the reason the state allows you to impose that, is to help you to promote the region in tourism. And so that's why you have to spend that money on tourism-related expenses. And we can now justify that. And so in order to pay for that by the people passing through, as opposed to the property taxpayers, then we would ask that the hotel motel tax be increased from 2% to 4%. That still leaves a 1%. That still leaves a 1% cushion that we're not asking for, because again, it is not justified. If we can't justify it, we're not going to ask for it. And, but we can justify the 2% additional on top of the, the 2% currently in play. And that way, we'll be able to fund the, the, the Welcome Center and the museum, and we do, uh, we are confident that, that all that is justified. We've researched it very thoroughly, and, uh, we, we just, we feel like that's the way to go.
Okay. You've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-02 with the 4% increase.
Second.
Okay, we've got stereo seconds on that one. So, um, so we have a motion on the board to approve that hotel motel tax from 2%, 4%. It has been properly seconded. Please roll call vote.
Armin Hansel?
Yes.
Armin Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Ottinger?
Yes.
Armin Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is consideration of Resolution Number 2021-02, Authorizing the City of Newport to Open a New Bank Account for the American Rescue Act Grant at Newport Federal Bank.
Uh, Mayor, I'll address that since Tina's not here. Um, we are in line. I'm sure all of you have heard about all this stimulus money that, that's coming down the pike, and every time you get some of it, you have to create a dedicated bank account for it. You can't commingle it with any other funds, and so it's, it's spelled out early in, in the, the documentation that you get on it. Must have dedicated bank account. And so this is what this is for. It's for some of the stimulus money that's coming. We have to cre, we have to create another bank account to put it in, and only, only you all can, can do that. So we're just asking that you give us the, the, the go-ahead to create another account for stimulus money to go in.
Make a motion if we go ahead and create another account for this stimulus money. I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded for consideration of Resolution Number 21, 2021-02, Authorizing the City of Newport to Open a New Bank Account for the American Rescue Act Grant at Newport Federal Bank. As I said, it's been properly seconded. Do we need a roll call vote? Okay. We need a, um, motion to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor? Signify the aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Item C is consideration of the annual highway maintenance contract between the State of Tennessee and the City of Newport.
Mayor, we've, we've been, uh, involved in this since 1994, and basically, the, the state reimburses us for any maintenance that we do along the state highway corridors inside the city of Newport. And, um, we, you know, we fix potholes, we sweep it, uh, we help with the snow removal and, uh, other maintenance issues that come along, we, other than paving, we don't do that. But this is just, uh, just the maintenance of it, not the, not the major stuff like that. But, uh, we've been doing it since 1994, and it's worked out really well, and so it's just one of the, it has to be renewed every year.
I was on that first group that everybody started molding to in the end of the state of, first one started. Me.
Okay. You heard, you heard the, uh, presentation. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I'll take it, sir.
Okay. We have made a motion to approve the consideration of the annual highway maintenance contract between the State of Tennessee and the City of Newport. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Item D is discussion of liquor stores in the City of Newport.
Okay. We, we spoke about this at the last month's meeting, about how you all wanted to move forward. I asked you to each individually get in contact with me and discuss what you wanted to do, and, uh, the consensus of the board was that you wanted to stay with the current number of liquor stores, which is three, and not increase the number. So that means we have currently one opening for, uh, someone to apply for, and of course the, the, the catch 22 was, you were gonna, we were gonna have to only pick one person to send to Nashville. So the interest level had been at like four or five people that had expressed interest in applying. So we had to have a elimination process that would allow us to pick one person to, to fill out the application for certificate that we would, would then approve and send on to Nashville. Because once we approved the certificate and sent it on to Nashville, it's out of our hands. So Nashville doesn't get, doesn't pick who gets it. We have to. So we had, we had to have a process of elimination. So I grew up, I took the actual application for the hotel, or, shoot, I'm sorry, I'm reading that, um, for the liquor license, and, uh, I put a copy, we've got a copy in your book, uh, and it's this right here. And it's kind of like, uh, it's, it's a, I've got, call it an application for an application, because that's basically what it is. Um, but it's, uh, would be like in a kind of a resume format. Anyone interested would, would have to fill this out. The deadline to turn something in is 12 noon Tuesday, May 4th, and then we would, you all would pick who, who you want to apply at the May 11th council meeting. We, we have copies of this. I know there were folks that were going to come tonight that were interested. They can take this with them tonight. Uh, we, we anticipated that and have copies available. But, uh, the, the information required will be name of applicant, any co-owners or investors, addresses and phone numbers, the location and description of the building, the proposed name of the business, the projected opening date timeline, and any other information, including letters of recommendation that the applicant wishes to include. Now, all this information come directly off the application, the other, the main application that the person that you all choose to send to Nashville will have to provide. So this is nothing that we came up with, uh, just off the top of our head. This came directly out of that, of that application. So if they can't provide that information for this, they won't be able to provide it for the other one. So we've already had somebody say, "Well, you know, uh, I, I, I've not got a place picked out yet." Well, you, you can't fill out the other application till you have a place picked out. So, uh, I, I felt like that was pertinent information, uh, that we needed to know where they intend to put it. Uh, even if they've not, uh, picked the exact spot, they could at least give you a rough idea, and, you know, exit 432, or, you know, the east side of town and Eastport or something. They, you know, may not be able to give you an exact physical address, but they can give you a, a general location. But, uh, that's what, that's what that I came up with, uh, for you guys to, to look at, to make your decision on who you wanted to pick to fill out the big application and have to pay the $500 filing fee. Because that was one of the things we wanted to, to avoid, was having all these folks, four, five, six folks that were interested in applying, having all them put in a $500 filing fee and only one of them getting chosen. And so we did, we went through all this to, to try to help people not, not have to pay $500 to get turned down. So this is a way to have a process of elimination, whereas only the one that you choose to fill out the big application, uh, where you have to do all the background checks and all that stuff, uh, and pay the $500 filing fee. So, uh, based on the conversations that I, I had with you all, uh, that's what I came up with.
Okay. Just looks fine. I think probably there needs to be some additional information in terms of the location, description of the building. Aren't there some restrictions about, for that building has to be located around schools or churches or whatever?
Well, I think that's why they ask you for the location, because, uh, you can't put it, I'm, I'm sure, I, I'm not positive, but I wouldn't think you could put it in so many feet of a school or a church.
Yeah. That, that is on the main application, though.
Yeah.
That information.
Well, it's the same thing. It's on here, the, you know, the location of it.
Yeah.
Because like I say, some, I, we already had one that, that, that kind of complained about that, said they didn't know exactly where they were going to put it yet. Well, you have to know, or you can't apply. You can't, you can't fill out the application that goes to Nashville, uh, if you don't know where you're going to put it. So that's, that's why I put that on here, because that is required in the official, uh, application. So yes, I mean, to go along with what you're saying, yeah, they have to be able to tell you where it is.
Yeah.
So that, I don't know where I'm going to put it, won't, won't work.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. And item D?
Well, I need, uh, if that's, if everybody's, if you don't mind, Mayor, if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd like for, to have the vote to say, "Yeah, that's the procedure we're going to follow." That's just, that is my recommendation.
Okay.
But I'd like for the council to accept that recommendation, and that authorizes me to move forward with it.
Okay. Okay. You've heard, uh, Senior Administrator's presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to accept James's recommendation on the process.
Okay. We have a motion then to accept the recommendation. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Motion carries.
And we will be posting that in the paper. We will be putting it online, uh, both at the webpage and on our Facebook page, so to get the word out there to where everybody that may be interested in that will know what the process is and the timeline.
Okay. All right. Item, uh, number 10 is item bids, purchases and expenses. And item A is consideration of bids for storage buildings for the City of Newport.
Mayor, these, uh, when we bought the AT&amp;T property, we, uh, one of the things that we wanted to do was put, uh, some storage buildings on there that would be, uh, specific for each department. There's already, uh, some space there, uh, that, um, that's already been designated out to the ones that, that needed the most. And so there were still, we needed three more small, uh, storage buildings, so each department could have a dedicated space to, to store stuff up there in a secure, it's all inside the fence, but we wanted them to be able to lock it inside, inside a building. And that way, this will allow us to do that. We only got one, one bid, uh, and, and that was old Hickory Buildings, and that was for $5,264 per unit. And this, this is the one that's located up in Brighttown. It is local.
And how many units?
Three.
Three.
Is this for the storage of paper records?
Yes. Well, they can put other stuff in it if they need to, but it's, that's primarily, that's what we're trying to put up here at this location inside, is records. Yes.
So these buildings will be able to regulate, uh, temperatures, I guess?
Uh, no, they won't, uh, you know, these won't. Now, the other two, that, some of the, you know, some of the others will. Like the police department, theirs will, uh, this is, but these three will not. They won't have like heat and air in them. The, the police department building does. It's the, it's actually, the police department building is the biggest building up there. And, uh, and it's got, it has heat and air in it. And, uh, one of the other buildings that we're going to utilize for City Hall has heat and air in it. And so, but these three will not. The main thing is just being able to keep most of the things dry. It's, you know, it's, uh, because like, that's like now, uh, they're back in the back, and a lot of, there's no heater, air back there. Now, the units are back there, but they're not heating or cooling that, that section of the building. Thank you.
Okay. You've heard, you've heard the presentation, uh, consideration of bids for the storage building for the City of Newport. Three units at $5,264 per unit. We need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll take it.
All right. We have a motion to approve. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we probably need to have a roll call on that.
I think we're just mayors, like, we don't have any.
Okay. All right. And make sure Regina happy. Consideration of bids for two zero-turn mowers for Parks and Recreation.
These are the two mowers that, uh, are replacing a 17-year-old grasshopper at the City Park, and of course, uh, for the amount of money that we put in for replacement, we're able to buy two because of the, um, uh, technology that has come in with the, with the zero turns and the transmissions and all have reduced the price quite a bit, so we're able to buy two of those mowers to replace one of those grasshoppers.
Okay. You've had, the information is in your package. Are there any questions?
Twelve thousand. Twelve thousand. Twelve thousand.
Yes.
So, uh, 12,799, 98. You heard the presentation then? What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve that purchase.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of two zero-turn mowers to replace a 17-year-old grasshopper. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Hey, I'm just enjoying not having to talk.
You did calculate this meeting.
Uh, consideration of bids for fencing for the Newport City Park Maintenance Area.
Yes. Uh, this is, uh, one of the critical things that we think that we need to, uh, to implement at our City Park, is that we have, we have seven bays over there and a new maintenance shop, and we have no way to protect our equipment. So, uh, you know, we all understand that fencing keeps an honest man out, but we have to protect our equipment. We have gators, we have mowers, we have tractors, we have trucks. You know, just recently, uh, I think one of our employees discussed with one of our aldermen that what had happened to one of our trucks already, where they have cut the Cadillac converters out of it. And so, uh, hopefully, this is a way for us to protect our equipment, and of course, we did bid. It is in the budget, um, and, uh, I think the, you have the information posted in your book.
I wanted to tell you what a good job I think y'all have done, and, you know, I've been over and looked and watched what you've done, and you're very well organized. You've got, what, 85 acres of land to mow?
We take care of 85 acres for the City of Newport.
People don't realize that, how much y'all do. I appreciate your job today.
Only thing we don't do is bins mediums, so we're, we're real happy that doesn't come our way, Mr. Fincham.
Okay. Got two bids.
Yes, we did get two bids, but the lower bid is, I think, shoemakers.
Shoemakers. Yeah, it's almost $10,000 less.
Yes.
Okay. All right. You've heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the lower bid with shoemakers. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the board to accept the bid of shoemakers for fence and ma, and, uh, at the maintenance shop for City of Newport. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call for this one, Regina.
Armin Hansel?
Yes.
Armin Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Ottinger?
Yes.
Armin Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prophet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
I'd just like to say, uh, Cadillac converters, I don't know if you know what those entail or not, but they contain a lot of precious metals inside those, that's why they're able to sell them pretty quick, so we're going to try to steal them, let them do it on their own.
And not for Mercedes-Benz.
Yes. Okay. Item D is consideration of bids for a drop-down gym divider curtain for the community center.
Yes, sir. This is also a budgeted item. Uh, this is a, uh, an automatic, uh, with a hoist that raises and... This is an automatic with a hoist that raises and lets down, a unit for us. It will change our venue at our community center. When I say venue, the people that we can rent it to, or also what we can do to divide the courts into two different courts. As Terry knows, coaching for years with the community center, if you don't have something to divide your court from the other court, you're too busy competing with the other team practicing on the other side of the net. Also, or the curtain, so to speak. Also, the process of, like the vinyl on the gym floor, how that will change our venue to rent our community center out for different opportunities. And, you know, one of the things that best suit us is that all this is a part of our SAFE program. The SAFE program is, what we presented to you guys, the same access point for everyone, same for everyone to come in and out. And again, this is a part of the community center renovations, to where the building is being renovated, and this is a part of that program for renovation. So, the curtain is one of those essential items that we need due to it divides the gym in two different courts.
You've been there how long?
Well, since Shannon Depew, and we put it up with a boat crank. So, Shannon's probably seventeen years, eighteen years he's not been with us. And so, we have to try to use a boat crank to put it up. It takes two men. You got to put the cable, you got to put the curtain on, then you got to bar hug it, then you got to drag it across.
I don't know how.
So, there's a lot that goes along with it, and this is essential to us. And of course, this is again a part of that SAFE program that we, the renovations of our community center.
Tim, I didn't see any warranty information. What is the law expectancy of this?
Well, the winch is probably going to be under a three-year warranty, but I would say at least twenty years on the curtain. And now, I will verify that. It'll either be twenty or thirty, but it'll only be three on the electric winch. That's standard for that.
But that can be replaced if it's?
Yes, because it's going to be in a situation to where we can get to it. It'll be out of play of kids, but it'll be where our maintenance staff can get to it.
And the cost is, you only have one bid?
We only have one bid, AJ Sports, and I believe it's a little over $15,000.
Fifteen thousand, okay, I said fifteen thousand two five seven and forty cents. All right, you've heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to move forward with this purchase.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase of a motorized drop-down curtain for the City of Newport Community Center for $15,257 and forty cents from AJ Sports Company. It has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Otter Woman Oddinger?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Propp?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I was telling Mr. Fincham that we hope to have a lot of others that put something on the agenda for bids next meeting, because I'll be back at you with four more bids. And James said, "Well, that's what you get for bringing them all at one time," but it's just the way that it's worked out. It is budgeted money, so, and thank you, Johnson.
All right, last item on the agenda is comments from citizens. Anyone wish to be heard?
You're the administrator of the hospital, right? Yes. Okay, why don't you stand up and introduce yourself? Most of us don't know you, don't think, read the paper.
Good evening, I'm Scott Williams. I'm the new CEO at Newport Medical Center. I just wanted to come and be present at a council meeting, and we'll visit from time to time. I'm originally from Johnson City. I've worked in healthcare since nineteen eighty-three, and started here in January of this year, and really happy to be back in northeast Tennessee. I purchased property in the county and hoping to start building this summer, so.
Appreciate that hospital up there, too, because we hear a lot of good comments. Ours ranked one of the highest in the whole of East Tennessee and everything. Thank you, appreciate that, okay?
Well, that's, and I'll pass that along to the staff, because it's the front-line staff and the hard work that the staff does that really makes the difference up there. They really appreciate it. And one thing I do want to note is that our first COVID case was April the tenth of last year, and today, for the first time in over a year, we have no COVID cases in the hospital. So, amen to that. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, showing interest in our town.
And I will mention that Scott, the first time I met him, when he came to my office and introduced himself, he basically said that he was, he's a homer, he's here to stay, he doesn't, he's not interested in going anywhere else, so we appreciate that Scott, because we have, I think, since I've been back, we went through at least two other administrators. So, thanks for being here, and hope you're going to stay for a long, long time, or at least until retirement.
I climbed all the heights I want to climb.
Thank you.
So, I'm ready, I'm ready to come home.
Welcome to Newport.
Thank you.
Any others wish to be heard? Okay, hearing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We've got a second, we are adjourned.